Mr. Mendez? Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present. Motion to accept the minutes from the last regular meeting of August the 15th.
Let's go move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
Jackson Street? Case number 9797, 66 Jackson Street. Petition filed by Philip Bransy and his attorney Lisa McLean to allow construction of a single-family residence in Zone R1 upon an undersized lot, 4,449 square feet, having less than the required frontage, 66.23.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Speak real quick again. This lot that we're talking about is on the corner of Jackson Street and Eagle Street. It was a nice little home stand for years. Unfortunately, they took it all back probably about nine or 10 years ago. And the house just fell into such disrepair. The city had to go in there and continuously clean the lot up. We wound up having to tear the building down. And just waiting for Sunday for the developer to come back and put something back up on the lot. I've been out there. I've looked at it. I've worked with him in the past, the developer. He's a pretty good developer, decent guy. And where the lot is, it's a very small lot. So you can't really put a big house on it, the size of the house that he's proposing for it. And he's got stakes on the ground. I've seen the stakes. He started about a three-bedroom house with one and a half bathrooms. And, you know, he does quality work. And the good thing about this is it's a nice little neighborhood. It'll add to it. It'll start to bring some tax revenue back into the city. So I know it's not often I come and speak in favor of something, but I'm here tonight. And I'm letting you know that I'm in favor of this. And I appreciate you letting me come in because I do have another meeting upstairs. Thank you. I just want to comment. And I'm not a gun aways guy. I like you here. It's different. I haven't seen it.
Put that in the record.
You're making points.
Okay, now I'm on TV.
You're making points.
Chairwoman, this is the board. Lisa McLean, petition.
Come on up here. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have this to just submit. This is just a petition that was circulated around to the neighbors in the adjoining houses. I actually spoke to one of the neighbors who told me a few years ago, Mr. Bransy volunteered. And she was having a hard time. And he actually volunteered on that same street, on Jackson Street, to help repair her porch. So this is a proposal for a single-family residence to be put where a single-family residence used to be. In 2005, it looked like there was a mortgage taken out by AmeriWest Mortgage. The property went under. It's been bank-owned for over 12 years. The city had to go in. The city tore down the previous structure because it was in such disrepair. The lot really hasn't been maintained. And the city has been doing some maintenance of the lot. And I submitted some photographs of the lot to you already, just showing where the lot is. I know some of you have been out seeing the markings that Ralph Reed did showing where the proposed foundation would be. It is a 20 by 32 foundation, two bedroom, one and a half bath building that Mr. Bransy's proposing. And I would say that's in no way adverse to the neighborhood. That's actually small for some of the houses in those neighborhoods and would be nicely situated and fit in that neighborhood. There's no detriment that's going to be served. The detriment already exists. It's a vacant lot. People hang out there, congregate, they litter there. And it's really been a nice work for some time, as councilmen here already suggested. There's no detriment in the size and the shape of the lot. The only issue that we're going to have in building this that's non-conforming is the fact that it's an undersized lot. Most of the lots in that neighborhood are undersized. And there's nothing here that's derogating away from the intent of the present zone ordinance.
Well, you know, a 20 by 12 and a half master bedroom is a decent size, you know? A 20 by 12 and a half master bedroom is a decent size. That's a good size. Now, is this living room, dining room, and kitchen all open? Well, I like the look of the house. I like the shutters. I like the windows. I like the doors.
Good inside layout.
You know, inside is very nice. And I like that you stayed the law. Nobody does that. I have to tell them every time, then I won't hear it unless... I like it that they stayed the law.
We remember from the last time you asked that.
She remembers the last time.
Perhaps it stays perfect.
That's exactly right.
Next time, make sure you stay. I like the state. It's hard to look at those pretty states.
We'll tell Ralph.
At least it wasn't snowing out or anything. You would see them. Do you know what I mean?
Yes. Yes. You bought this lot in June?
Yes.
So you did it without... You didn't do it with any contingency of getting permits? You just bought it like you roll on the dice?
I just came from the decision. It's been something that's been there for quite some time. Many people have looked at it. And he knew that he was taking some rest. But he believes in Lynn. He's done a lot of work here. And he felt comfortable that this is the type of thing that would be good for the neighborhood.
Darren didn't get a chance to mention. I'm sure that him and the city were very involved in Jackson Street not that long ago, redoing some houses up the other end right across the street. We have that house directly across the street from you on Jackson Street. This sort of fills in that last vacant lot there.
I have no further questions.
Oh, okay.
Just curious. So you put your window on the right side.
I didn't even...
Not the big double.
The window?
That's the side facing the... The other side has a street, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a corner lawn.
Yeah. I'm just surprised when you put that one on the left.
I think it was done because I think that's the kitchen and the dining room area. Yeah, providing a little space for tables because of the way of the design. Kitchen's a little narrow.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one.
What is the wish of the board? Anyone else wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else wishes to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for the... To speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing no one, the hearing is closed. Those wish to speak in opposition? What is the wish of the board? Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Wood. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Case number 9796, Two Rogers Ave. Petition of Brightwood Limited Partnership, ZVA 9796, Robert Gilbert by his attorney Samuel Vitale, to allow addition of two basement dwelling units prohibited in Section 8.3.6 of the Zone Ordinance within an existing apartment house on a non-conforming lot in Zone R5 having less than the required lot area, frontage, and parking.
I'm glad I'm in the tree. This is a European service. They didn't care about me. They cared about the suit. I'm Samuel Vitale. Gilbert was here. If I mind, I'll come back to why I'm in it. I'd like to read the application filed, which is a copy. Because you read from the ad. We filed an application that said to permit the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming building, which it is, in the R5 High Rise District, which it is, to provide two additional units, which we are, on a lot with less than the required area, frontage, and parking. But what's not in the ad, which is important, I think, to what we have to say and why we're here, we're looking for a finding that says such use is not to be detrimental effective in the neighborhood. Because the permits for these were already issued. The units are already there. So the first question I had to answer was then, why are you going to the Board of Appeals? And when I provided the answer, whoever drafted this, and I don't know if it's a zoning official who's satisfying the state requirements, but you're supposed to be a zoning official when you draft this, I indicated it because here's the difference. Even though the two units are there, okay? And even though there's a permit for it, the building department granted that permit for these basement units. But the building department was looking at the nature of the occupants. There are people with handicap, all right? So there's a possibility if the people with handicap were to leave, that someone would say, well, no, those units aren't there anymore. But they are there. And so I saw this when Mr. Gilbert came to me. And I said, yeah, I can see what they're saying. And so here's my suggestion. The building, the Ruth Building, has never had parking. But when you read the parking ordinance, it says that if you expand the building or if you expand a use, then you're subject to the current parking requirement. So there's no way on earth that this building that has no parking could satisfy for this many units the parking requirement. And so that's, I think, Section 9.3 of the Zone Ordinance and the parking, which says if you expand the building... Well, we know he's not expanding the building. If you recall, I think we had a similar issue on Union Street, the corner of Union and Chesnut. The building didn't get any bigger, but the number of units increased. And likewise, there was no parking. So that's one reason we're here, okay? Is that since 1964, parking's been required. And most recently, maybe in 2015, they added that language that if you're a pre-existing non-conforming building, you don't have to meet the parking requirement. But if you increase the use or if you increase the building... So this is where I think I've given you the benefit of my Jesuit training in the past, okay? I say that this building, once you have more, three or more units, you have an apartment house. So whether you have 15, 30, 45, once you get beyond three, it's an apartment house. So the character of an apartment house, if you look at the table of uses, is a residential building. It's a multifamily residential building. So in my world, we're not making an essential change because the character of the use is residential. There is no question. And I got that far in the eighth grade, that I know that you add 2 to 34, you get to 36. And 36, even most lawyers would probably admit, is greater than 34, okay? But that is a difference of degree. It's volume. It's number, okay? So and it's already been approved. But the approval, I think, was given because of the people who occupy it. So what we're asking you to do is to do two things. Make a determination that we don't need to meet the parking requirement, even if you believe that we've increased the use. And secondly, what the statute requires and what the Zone Ordinance says is that if you alter a non-conforming building, and this is where I got into a debate at the building department, I say the building's non-conforming because it's on a 6,000-square-foot lot, 950, doesn't have 50 feet of frontage, doesn't meet the parking requirement. There are many reasons why it's a non-conforming building, okay? It says that if you alter a non-conforming building, you can't do it unless you've been ordered by the building department to make it safe or you have the approval of Board of Appeals. That's Section 7.4 of the Zone Ordinance. It says no non-conforming structure can be altered without the approval of the Board of Appeals. So that's what the ordinance says. The state statute says that if you can alter a non-conforming building or a non-conforming use, but it says provided that there is a finding that what you're doing is not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood than the existing use. And the case law in that talks about if you're doing substantially the same thing and substantially the same way, then that's not going to have a detrimental effect. You couldn't in fact have a detrimental effect. It has to be substantially more detrimental. So there's all kinds of tests at case law where a guy had a contractor's yard, and he may have had three trucks. And now he wants to have a contractor's yard and have 50 trucks. That's one of those residents, okay? But here, whether the number's 34 units or 36 units, it's all in the same building, and the effect on the neighborhood is negligible if any at all. And so I think that that's why I worded it. And I would hope that if you make a determination or you're willing to approve this, you'll make the finding that it's not more detrimental in its effect than the neighborhood. And then the second thing is, just to give you an idea of what it's like to be on this side of the rail, okay? Because of that, I determined that all petitions, by the way, they're changing this, have to pay $150 for advertising. They're changing that, so you have to pay the cost of the ad. And I raised this in front of the city council. So you've got tonight three cases. Unless the ad costs 600 or 700 bucks, it might have been cheaper to have them pay their portion of the ad. But the flat rate of 150, so I took 150 on the calculation. And then I went down the dinner menu, a la carte menu, and I found non-conforming use building, 250. I added it up. I got 400, whatever, and I sent the money in. And then they came back and said, if you want this case heard, send $1,750 more. So I said, wait a minute. That's $2,050. Well, that's 2,100. That's 150 for the ad and $1,000 a unit. So if the board is inclined to approve this, I would hope the board would give some consideration to the fee and the application of the fee. Because I see this as a non-conforming structure. And I think that, you know, obviously, we paid the full amount. We paid $2,150 to be here. But not everybody is Brightwood Limited Partnership. Just something like average folks. And you should know that the proposal that's coming up not only makes people pay for the cost of the advertisement, they put a set fee of $2 a person for every person they mail to, including the planning boards of Revia, Saugus, Salem, Swampstock, all the surrounding communities. So I think I counted up 11. So at the get-go, you're paying 22 bucks to mail. Now, you know how they determine the abuttes? Just as an aside, so you're alone? Mr. Karen, he's got the assessor, has a computer program. It's like Google Earth. He pushes a button and says, give me the abuttes within 300 feet. And it prints the labels. Now they have the labels. They put the labels on the envelope. They mail it. 49 cents to mail. Maybe there's some clerk time involved. But every person that comes before you in the future is going to have to pay $2 per person plus their appropriate share of the ad, even though the statute under which they're doing this says you can't raise a tax that way. It's only supposed to be the real cost. So for those people who have to bear that cost, which is coming in the future, who aren't developers who own lots of property, the application of this fee schedule is important. And the interpretation of the fee schedule is important. But more important than that is that when I have this next petition, I did not draft it. The builder did. You'll see it. He sent his handwriting. He did a very good job, all right? Is the wording the same on the petition he wrote? Is it in the ad? Yep. This is no. Now, when Jim Stagg, who was a registered apothec, made those changes, I have great respect. He often pointed things out to me that I didn't know, all right? I have no problem, Mr. Donovan. But I just want you to know that every time one of my petitions gets filed, if they change the wording, I'm going to point that out to you. Because it has implication. And so in this one, to me, the most important thing is a finding. And the only people that can make that finding are this board or the city council. There's only two special permit granting authorities in the city of Lynn. You're one of them, and the city council's the other. And you both have the same obligation, which is to make that determination. So if you decide to approve this, I would hope you would do it with the finding that says that what we're doing, these two, if anything, it improves the neighborhood. Because two people who were handicapped and had a disability were able to get housing because these units were approved. And here are the permits. I mean, I just don't understand how somebody can say $2,150 because you're adding a unit. And the building department issued a permit months before.
Well, Mr. Vitale, are you asking, we should accept a... To give you half, a cut in half, or whatever the fee that was...
No, I...
No, I mean, some people do that. I have no problem.
No. So when I objected, I was told, well, you can ask the board. When I told Mr. Gilbert, he brought the check down and said, I gotta get this resolved. We'll pay the money. But not everybody is like Mr. Gilbert. Not everybody in me have the same needs.
And there are people handicapped in there. I've seen there's Marine Corps signs on the windows too. So someone is...
Yeah.
Evidently.
So from our perspective, if we did anything, we improved the neighborhood. We didn't cause a detriment. But you've got an older city. And there were going to be a lot of buildings, given what they've done with the swooping all of Eastland, the single-family, all south of the Washington Street to the Saugus Road is going to be whatever. When you do that, you make a lot of buildings non-conforming. And people will have to come in here, as Gilbert's did. But it wasn't an attempt not to pay what was listed. It was paying what was listed and then being told that that wasn't enough. But that isn't the relief. The relief we're seeking is that if those people were to leave and there weren't two other handicapped individuals, then the question sort of hangs out there. What do you do with these two apartments that already have a permit? I don't want to put anybody in a position of saying, and the only people that can make it right are you.
What was the $1,000 fee again?
We paid originally 150 advertising, which is everybody pays. And then if you go down the list, and I have the list of what the fee schedules are, it says if you have a non-conforming use, you pay $250. So that's what we paid, 250 plus the 150. And that came in email that said, this case will not be heard unless you send $1,750 more.
And that was for what?
And that was because someone said it's $1,000 a unit to add these units. So we paid it.
Who said that?
Mr. Boogie.
But the units, like you said, the units have already been approved.
Right. And I think I said that back when I got that letter. I said that the units have already been approved.
Yeah.
You can always give my money back if it's...
So this isn't a new fee schedule? Or is this a new...
No. I don't think it is new. Well, they've had more than one fee schedule, okay? I've talked to Mary about this. But when you file this application, if you go to the city of Lynn and you download, it has, for example, the next case has, if you have a side yard, it's like 300 bucks. And if you have, that's for a one or a two family. This is like, I call it the dinner menu or the a la carte. You can pick off what it is, all right? But it really comes to characterization, you know, what is it you're seeking? But it used to be, and members of this board remember, it used to be that people were unsuccessful. They got their money back. That ended, okay? Then it used to be that if you saw three things, you needed parking, something and something, you paid the higher fee. But now, what they say is the cash register keeps running. So if, for example, if we came in and we needed to get a relief for the parking spaces, all right? And the requirement is 1.5 per unit. For every unit we were short, somebody would say, you have to pay $50 a space, all right? So it's additive. Follow me. They keep running the register. So if you ask for this relief, this relief, and this relief, it isn't the higher, it's the total. But here, somebody went to and said, there were 34, there's 36, it's $1,000 a unit to add a unit. We paid it.
Who's somebody?
Okay, yeah, we need to review. We need to review those...
Well, given the fact...
The wording. No, I mean, you know, we do that on occasion when they say they have to raise the fee. That's our job to approve it.
Absolutely. That's why I asked Mary what the fee schedule was. But I'm just telling you, beyond what you're doing, the council has an ordinance... I was the only person that appealed in front of the subcommittee on the ordinances that said, and they thought it was a great idea. I didn't oppose it. I just said, think about what you're doing, all right? Because you're adding a cost to some people who can pay it, but there are some who can't. And it's one thing to recoup the cost of what you're doing. That's legitimate. But if you see it as a way to raise revenue, that's not legitimate. And so I just pointed out to them. I said, hey, okay, so maybe it doesn't cost just 49 cents to mail a letter. But I went to see Peter Callen, and he told me this is how we did it. He pushes this button. The map comes up. Out the other end come the labels, the people who live within 300 feet. They take the labels down to the city clerk's office, and they put them on the animals. So maybe it isn't 49 cents, but it's a $2 a person. That's what it's going to be. And then, as I say, somebody said to me, and I honestly don't know the answer, why do we have to tell the planning board in Revia?
I was going to ask you the same thing. You just saw all these surrounding towns. What does that mean?
That could be state regulations.
Yeah, but I'll tell you. I thought, I'll tell you what I think it is, okay? I think it's all the contiguous communities. Old Lynn's contiguous to several...
I'm about to say the...
Lefield, PB, okay? Swastika, Saugus, all right?
Sounds like a little bit of a stretch to me.
That's what it says.
Probably some old law.
Yeah.
It is a state quality. You should get changed.
I guess I'm just a little confused. What is this petition about? Is it about the fee schedule?
No, no. It's about the fact, and I was seeing the fact that there are permits for these units that allow them to be occupied by handicapped individuals, that as a fact, there was never a finding that I think is required that involved two things. One is the ordinance says if you increase the use or ability, the building's not being used. The footprint of the building is safe. But if you increase the use, you then abound by the county parking requirements. There's no way on earth that this building that has no parking can meet that.
When were these two units added?
The 17th, what does it say? The 17th of May or whatever.
So these two units were added. You've got a building permit.
Yeah.
You have an occupancy permit. So why are you here?
Because if the people move out, I was... And I said, why are we... That's why I asked. As I understand it, the reason they did was to afford these handicapped people, these people with disabilities, housing. So they gave the permit.
So you're saying that the building department, Inspection Services, granted a building permit and an occupancy unit for two units because handicapped people might move into them?
No.
Because they did move into them? Because they did move into them?
Yeah.
Like that was the plan all along?
There were two units through the Housing Authority that were basically... It was money for, it was rehab money available and two slots available for people with a certain type of disability. And they fall under that educational or rehab state law. So I let him send it to Mike Donovan, and he approved it. Just like if someone was going into a, you know...
So now let me ask this question. If these people move out, is there a restriction on these units that they have to...
That is a question. That's exactly the question. That's exactly the question.
Because if there isn't, I would think we could put one as a condition on the granting of warrants.
Well, all I can tell you is that I believe the reason that the term was granted is what Mr. Cole said. I believe the reason that the permit was granted is what Mr. Cole said.
But once the permit's granted, it's a permanent certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
So, if these people move out,
Then, 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 you know, there's an ordinance in Lynn that says whenever you rent a unit, the health department has to come down and inspect. But the health department can only do that-
What's the compliance rate with that?
But, 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 then they go, go to look to see, they do a check to see, okay, is this a lawful unit?
If somebody goes to get a replacement-
Yeah, but I don't think we should put any restrictions on this.
No, you know what the board-
You know why, I'll tell you why.
The whole reason this piece was granted was because these people were disabled, and if they move out, then all of a sudden, the premise on which these two were granted is-
No, here's the deal, well, here's something to consider. Uh, they're being paid on a monthly subsidy. Now, let's say the federal government drives up that particular program. So eventually, they have to phase them up. What does the, what does the landlord do with those two vacant units that he rehabbed?
Come back to us to get the petition, the condition removed?
Well, there's no condition. There is no condition.
If there weren't one?
But there is none.
Well, we can put one on that.
You know, you know, you know-
If we were gonna ask this.
Let me, let me say something right here. The Gilbert family are noted in this city, but they're looking after the tenants. They have a great reputation, and they would never do anything to hurt any of the tenants. And that's probably they, they, they always get plenty of heat, fact they own, turn on the heat, everything, so I wouldn't worry about them. And, you know, how they're gonna handle the tenants down in that basement.
Except they could sell the building to somebody else tomorrow.
Absolutely. But if they, if they're as good as them, and they look after the people, that's good.
That's a big if.
Well, it happens, so. It's a good city, and, you know.
Can I say this later?
Sure.
The thing is, though, this building is a, every unit in the building is appropriate. So every tenant in there is subsidized, and it works with a uh, a social service provider, which is no different than these two units. But, you know, maybe I'm not understanding this right. This is as if I had two units. When I got them is irrelevant. The bottom line is, I have two units, and I wanna make them legal on the records of the building department. I'm not, I'm not coming here to ask whether I can do the two units.
Except, the thing that's odd to me is that you have a building permit and a certificate, a permanent certificate of occupancy from the building department. So, what's making it illegal? That's what I don't-
No, I don't think it is. No, no, no. Here's the problem. There was never going forward, you're right about going forward, okay? This building doesn't satisfy two requirements that I think exist. One state law that says you need a finding that by adding, if you believe that 36 is more than 34 and you added two units-
It's 35, there's 10.
Yeah, but you gotta make a finding that that's not substantially more detrimental. That's known as a 6D finding.
I guess, maybe I'll ask the question this way. What is it that you are trying to do that you can't do unless we vote this, unless we approve?
We don't wanna be required to suddenly try to find parking spaces for 37 units, 'cause we can't.
But who is making you do that?
Read the ordinance. The ordinance says that if you enlarge your use, you are then bound by the current parking requirement. The current parking requirement is 1.5 per dwelling unit. There's no way that can satisfy-
That's the interpretation.
But nobody's saying that, nobody is saying, nobody's willing to that.
Well, that says that you listen to the cemetery, but that's what it says on the books. It says, so, you see, we're trying to get this out of the realm of whether there's a nice guy upstairs or a bad guy upstairs. That's why we have a government in this country of laws, not people. Okay? So, it says that in the ordinance. It says that in 48, section six. That you cannot, uh, it says it in two places. In the ordinance, it says, "You cannot alter a non-conforming structure except with the approval of the board of appeals." That's what it says.
I guess the analogy I would make is that to me, this seems like you're using, I mean, I'll analogize it. Let's say you get a speeding ticket. Um, or you don't get a speeding ticket. You wanna appeal the possibility that you might get a speeding ticket. So you go to
The difference is, this is what I mean-
I just don't understand what you're appealing.
We don't want to have this depending upon who happens to live there or what their disability funds to you. I can't say that any one of them there.
No, you know what, this is sort of, and I was thinking, this is really preventing, right, right now, there's no issue. They're both legal.
It's a extended non-conforming use, so that's the issue.
If I were to pay to get findings, they say company leave units out. I cannot say, I have to say what they, you have in the record books, which is only 35. This is the only reason why I-
If you look at the, uh, if you look at the field card, that's what the assessor says.
So, and this is my purpose, going to the bank. So when I go to the bank, yes, I say this 37, it's a damn lot.
So you're saying the assessor's field card says 35?
Yes.
So they're only taxing you for 35 units?
Well, this just got, the, uh-
So this is a new, I would have to imagine the next time, the next January 1st goes by, they're gonna hold the building permit, they get the copies of them, and that's gonna change it.
That's right.
But then your field card will say 37 without us coming-
But, the fact is that the building department does not control zoning status. The only people that can control zoning status are the building commissioner, you, and the city council.
I've been up against this many times in the past, and I've bought buildings that have units in the building that were never legal according to these codes. And I've had to come to the board of appeals many times, units that have been there for 50 years to make sure they were legally up to snuff.
Do we have, I mean, I don't, I, I guess the other issue I have is, you're telling us that there's something that says 35. I don't see anything attached here that says, I mean, normally, if I'm remembering other cases before this board, we require plans and certified plans from architects and-
These units are all- It's a permit. The people that have the authority to ask for the plans, saw the plans and approved them.
What here says that there's 35, there's 37, that's-
No, that's not the issue. The issue is, are these lawful units? And you, the plans have been approved. When you get an occupancy permit, when you get a building permit, the people in charge have to say two things. That what you do satisfies the state building code and the city of Lynn's zoning laws. If it doesn't satisfy both of those, you don't get this.
What plan has been approved? You said a plan has been approved?
Ask the building commissioner. He signed off, we've got an argument-
We don't ask, we, we're, or that you present to us.
Well, you have the so-
We have the permit. It's just like the end of the film, this is like the score of the Red Sox. Last night, the game was over.
The number one.
The game was over, the score was, it's a Red Sox win.
All right, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. The reason they're here is because it's legal if you have a-
A finding.
No, um, they're, uh, what's the word, what's the word I want to use? What's the word I want to use?
I just don't understand.
They're legal limits right now.
Oh, that's right.
Because of the population, isn't it?
But they need the approval of the CBA, that's what it is.
Because of the handicap, that's the word I want, right?
Let's proceed.
So they're there because they, they're handicapped. If those people move out, the only people that can move back in again are handicapped people unless we say.
What we have that says all of that, that's what I'm missing here.
You have an occupancy-
I have a budget.
You can't look behind, I'm gonna tell you something. You're gonna need to address that.
I'm gonna address that, what do you mean?
Because the statute says that no board, no board
I don't know what's happening.
Can take an action against people with a disability or a handicap.
What's happening?
Okay, so, the building commissioner obviously was convinced, and he got it. So, you, you wanna look behind for the building these days. He is the zoning enforcement. He is the zoning enforcement. And I will tell you, look at 48, section 3. It says that there shall be no ordinance or law-
I, I don't have to be lectured to or argue with-
No, no.
I-
I like that.
I'm, uh-
That's what the statute says.
Move along.
And so, it ought not to-
Move along.
No, no, but it ought not to be based upon who happens to be the building commissioner or what happens to be the handicap. It ought to be whether the building satisfies the building code and the zoning ordinance. Because they'll be there, when we're all gone, they'll be there.
It just went by, like, you know, whenever I've taken over a building, I've owned a building, I've always made sure that the building is brought up to whatever code or health requirements that it requires, whether it's the right amount of units, fire safety, whatever it is. My family and me have done it for 50, 60 years. So whatever I do, or whenever I come to a board like this, it's always to clean up, make sure everything's legally properly done. I didn't have to come here, but I wanna make sure it's done. So it's legally any assessor has a 37 unit. So he brought some good points up. Uh, but that's the reason why I'm here, and why I've come here for 60 odd years. To make sure everything's clean. And when I own a building, that building is brought up to code in every way. Legal, building, fire safety, and everything else.
Well, you, you, you-
I learn from my father. And if I do something wrong, he still hits me in the head.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is close for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing nothing, hearing is close for those wishing to speak in opposition.
That should be right, too.
Yeah, I, I will second that, I just have a question to the attorney. Uh, you, the comment language, would you like, in addition to the comment language, a statement that we find that this is the use is not, not to be detrimental to the effect of the neighborhood?
Yeah, that's what's called a 6D finding. I can't tell you how many times I've been told by Mr. Donovan that when you have a non-conforming use, you need to have a special permit granting authority, that's you, make what they call a 6D finding. And that's what it is.
And, you know, the reason that this board decided to stop giving people back their money if they lost was because we realized how many were testing the waters.
Oh, I understand that.
And, and it just got completely out of hand.
But they give the penny monkey twenty, oh, yeah.
True.
Uh, we have a letter, um, addressed to, to Chief President Curley. I am writing to you and the board members to express my support for the request of Wrightwood Limited Partnership by its agent representative, attorney Samuel Vitale, to permit the operation of pre-existing non-conforming building in the R5 High Rise District to provide two or different units in a block less than required area. Funneling parking such units do not be detrimental to the effect of the neighborhood. I am on the way writing opposition to this petition in no way affecting the city. Previously provided all necessary permits to allow renovation to the building basement and enable persons with disability to occupy the apartments. My experience with the Gilbert family who own an upgrade to smoke the apartment houses in good is they consistently act in a cautious manner. Thank you, Mr. Vitale, for your attention. Richard Ifulusi, Councilor of Order IV.
Mr. Callan made a motion to accept. Anyone second?
Mr. Cole, sir.
I second it.
Just seconded by Mr. Cole. Please call the roll.
Mr. Melas?
I am standing.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeShawn? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callan?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes, to grant.
Case number 9795, Locust 6, Glen Terrace. Petition of Lynn Foley by her attorney Samuel Vitale to allow construction of an 18 by 24 attached garage with second floor dwelling space that encroaches within the minimum required side yard setback, seven feet, five inches, and establishes parking less than five feet from the property street line upon an existing non-conforming lot in zoning districts R2.
Our attorney, Van Vitale, would be is the builder, uh, Michael Blank, who actually wrote this petition. And I'll read you what he wrote. I did a little tweaking, but again, he had that you have, and what the petition says that he wrote. And I understand that there are a lot of people like Mr. Blank, who's the builder, who's, who's lived in this house for over 35 years. He asked that
He asked that, that you allow him to add a garage. And by doing that, with a family room over, and he wrote it in his own manner, and there are often people that do. Add an 18 by 24 garage with a family room over, back porch, and access stairs to a single-family dwelling with less than the required sideline and parking set back. The reason for that is, once you attach a garage, it becomes part of the structure. When it becomes part of the structure, if it was detached, you can have an accessory structure. A garage is an accessory structure to a dwelling. A garage is used for parking for the residents. And so you can have an accessory structure within three feet of the property line. But once you attach it, it becomes part of the structure. Well, then you can't have a side yard with less than seven and a half feet. So the first reason we're seeking relief is that when they attach the garage, which would be accessible from the home, they don't have seven and a half feet, because the addition takes them over five and a half feet. And the second reason is that the current, again, and this is like saying, well, gee, no one will enforce it. Well, that doesn't take it on for the books. A parking space for a single-family home, you need two spaces. This is a single-family garage, and you need to get, you can have stack parking, but the ordinance says that a parking space is nine feet wide and 18 feet long, even though most cars are not more than 14 feet. So if you took the five-foot buffer, you can't park within five feet of the street line or the property line. That's five. You add the space of 18, that's 23. If you get to 23, the car's gotta be posted in the garage all the time, because if you pull it out, you're not gonna have five plus 18, 23. And that's the second reason for relief, that we have parking, if you park in the driveway, within five feet. Now, you can sit here and tell me, well, who cares? Well, we care, 'cause that's what the ordinance says. So we're here for two reasons. One is the sideline. And the second is, if you look at the dimensions of the lot, and this is a great little neighborhood, adjoining and contiguous to Lynn Woods. The people who live there and this little street have the benefit of the whole of Lynn Woods behind their homes. And that's certainly one of the things that makes this an interesting neighborhood to live in. And as I say, this woman has lived there for 35 years. She's not going anywhere. And there's gonna be a family room above. And Mike told me, 'cause I asked him these questions, there's no bathroom. It's connected to the house. It's connected to the house. It's just space above to be used as a family room. So the real reason is the sideline violation. And then the second is, when you look at the dimensions of the plan that Mike proved, if you do the math, then even though the car's not out on the street or on the sidewalk, it's still within that buffer. And so those are the two things we're seeking for you to grant relief.
How many household residents are there?
Who lives in Lynn Woods? I just know her.
Her widow.
Yeah. I think we should do widow women, I think.
How many bedrooms?
I'm not sure.
It's a single-family house. It's a small house.
It's a separate ranch.
Yeah.
It's either two, maybe three, I'm not positive.
Well, this were a lot of cars and a boat and a van. A lot of stuff was there when I was up there.
Is that right?
Yeah, it was.
Well, it's too tight for the neighborhood. I don't know if there are any of us.
Well, there was three things in the driveway.
Really?
Yes.
I've never seen.
Was the boat in the driveway?
I've never seen a boat. Every time I run up there to take pictures, the only thing that was in there was the Subaru.
Yeah, and they must have taken it in because of the storm, wasn't it?
So, I mean, I don't even know that they have a boat. You say you saw them. I've never seen it.
Well, it was covered over, had a top.
Yeah, no, I've never seen it, to be honest with you.
That's too bad, they'll lose access to the backyard.
But they'll still have access on the side, 'cause there'll still be the three-foot hilltop or walkway there.
How close is it gonna come to, there's a drop there, you know, like a.
Oh, the weight, the drop, yeah.
I think it's gonna be about five feet.
From the, to the retaining wall?
From the retaining wall to the addition, yeah.
It, it looked different, 'cause when I'm thinking 18 feet, I said, geez, that's gonna be sitting.
Mr. Blank.
Yeah.
Would you, would you please come up?
The survey shows that it's 23 feet, so 18 leaves us five. You know, the front of it is just sort of some kind of fence or something in there.
Do you think that retaining wall's gonna hold?
Yeah, it looked like wood, yeah.
Well, I mean, you could take down the foundation. They won't put a surcharge on that wall.
Won't put a what?
A surcharge. It won't, because you're going deep with the.
We're going deeper.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're trying, actually.
And also, access to the back could be at a rear door, right?
Yeah.
You don't have to walk around the edge of the, of the garage. You can walk a back door.
This was a discussion I had with her last night. We've gone through this one, probably down the stairs, but at one occasion, no.
So this is a step up from the existing house, a step up?
Only because of the structure for the garage door and the height, they have layers for the tracks for the garage door. You know, I don't think we're gonna really be able to get down too much in there as far as height. It'd be nice to get that driveway down a little bit.
What a bedrock there is.
It's pretty ledgy around there, so I'm looking around and I'm kinda.
Yeah, so you need that, that low, low hardware for the door, you know?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So you can slip that.
We still, we still need, it was borderline for two 14-inch LPLs, so I said, we'll put three.
Yeah, they hang them up, yeah, they only get that.
Sure, so we got above 17 inches, but, you know, give or take what happened to the ground and.
A lot of people have that.
Yeah.
It's fortunate, but they work it out.
Right.
How many houses have you built before or done?
How many have I built? Thirty?
Oh, yeah.
Thirty, maybe more.
So you get a lot of experience.
I worked with my dad for 15 years. We built X amount of houses.
Who's you got?
Chuck Blank.
Oh, Chuck.
From Saugus.
Oh, yeah. He'd be a nice candidate for a heated driveway.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it would be. It'd be nice if they could get it down some, I mean, but that remains to be seen. You know, if you can get it down. Issue would be, is that back, back corner, I'm having doubts that we'll really get that down as much as the front, which is okay, because we have to put a pitch in the garage anyway.
What kind of bedrock is it? Is it that purple stuff? Because you're gonna have a lot of trouble building that.
It was gray and purple.
Oh, good luck.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't, doesn't bust up too easy.
No, it doesn't. Turns to powder.
It's like roasting.
Yeah, it is. No, it's a challenge. It's hard for it.
Yep.
Yeah, good. You need developers like that.
Right. It's not much to land, is it?
No.
No, no water out there, right? No water?
Heat. Just the heat.
No, no sinks or anything?
Any other questions on the board?
I have no question.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Is this petition, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
I want the petition to be granted, sorry.
Motion made by Mr. Woods, seconded by Mr. Callen to grant. Please call the roll.
Oh, I do have a letter.
Oh, you do, yeah.
Just summarize it. Dear Chairwoman Curly, you look before your body for consideration, December 19, 2017 meeting, an application to add an 18 by 24 garage with feeling room over, back porch, and access stairs to a single-family dwelling with less than the required sideline and parking setback. I am in favor of this petition as I discussed the petition with Ms. Foley's attorney, Samuel A. Vitale. As I indicated to him and I expressed to you, I am familiar with this home and neighborhood and the attached garage with room above is in line with the homes in the area, one and two family houses. Ms. Foley is a longtime resident of the Saugus, and I would ask you for your favorable consideration to the proposal. Thank you. Yours truly, John M. Walsh, Councilor of 7.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes, to grant.
Reconsider the case. Case number 9789, 77 Hawthorne Street.
630.
It's been, someone asked for reconsideration, so we will vote on reconsideration.
All right. Just a point of clarification.